13, mainly due to regulatory drivers. There was a significant upgrade to the treatment processes. Almost every part of the plant was touched. Preliminary treatment, secondary treatment, and tertiary treatment. So we touched a lot of the facility during that work. While we did a lot of work there, about $23, $24 million worth of work, there were components that did not get touched. So Aeration Basins 1 and 2, Final Basins 1 and 2, there was just some facilities that weren't directly related to the mandated improvements from KDHE and growth opportunities. But we didn't do work there, and we identified them in the facility plan as an opportunity for improvements in this job. Some of those potential improvements are to make them work better, because right now plant staff really doesn't use them. They rely on the new facilities, like most people do, new facilities versus old facilities. Reconfigure some of those basins to make them more pleasant for plant staff to actually use. The same thing with the final basins. Some of that equipment has reached or nearing the end of its useful life. Replace that mechanism. Do hydraulic improvements to make them operate better. Again, if plant staff doesn't want to use them, they don't really offer a lot of value. But in the treatment process, they do offer a lot of value. So we saw those improvements adding additional reliability to the treatment process and a good investment. In that 2013 project, we also made significant improvements, electrical switch care at the plant. I understand from Mr. Dewitt that recently presented some MEP upgrades at the plant that involved some electrical improvements. What we did was provide the provisions for two future generators. I know you're going a different direction for the short term, but we did provide you with a robust capability to add a lot of backup power. Since that time, I know that Westar has really improved that substation near the facility and provides that redundancy there. So those two feeds do offer a lot of redundancy to the facility, but the option is there in the future for additional generator capacity to give you that ability to work outside Westar's realm. And that can provide additional reliability during an outage if you do need it. But one thing the wastewater treatment plant expansion in 2013 didn't touch on was solids handling. And the reason that was, was because there was a fixed budget. We were trying to focus on the KDHE and EPA mandated regulatory improvements. So the decision was made to focus on that. How do we meet what the regulators are going to need? How do we plan for growth? How do we do repair and replacement? So the solids handling was running really well. Dr. Dorr's farm runs great, but we didn't do anything with that facility. But while that process does produce high-quality bile solids, and for those who aren't familiar, the treatment plant is on the north side of the Kansas River. On the south side, there's an extensive area of city-owned land, at least land, where digested and processed bile solids are applied to that land as part of the solids disposal program regulated by KDHE. But there's always room for improvement, and that's what we really focused on this time, and that was really a crux of the wastewater portion of the study. We knew we expanded the liquid treatment portion. How can we enhance the solids portion? So much of the bile solids use drives other solids handling process. When we're done processing all the solids that come from this plant, what are we going to do with them? So we started at the end of the plant and said, where can we put it? And then work our way back up in the treatment plant. So we used, and we didn't go through the details of the value planning process we used in this, it's contained in that 400-page report, but we used a matrix analysis to employ or to look at multiple alternatives. We looked at land application, which is continuing what you have now, de-watering it before application, sending it to a landfill, composting and distribution, dedicated land disposal, which is basically an onsite landfill, LSTEC, which is more of a cutting-edge process to try to make beneficial use of the solids, and sod farm that was thrown out as, not thrown out as option, it's proposed as an option for us to look at. What we looked at during the process was how's it going to perform? How's it going to accept? What's it going to cost? We added risk and vulnerability to that. You know, we want this to be a resilient facility. We don't want to be at the mercy of somebody like a landfill operator who says, I can't take your waste anymore, or I'm going to provide so many restrictions on it that it becomes so costly to do. Maybe it's cost-effective now, but if the risk of continuing with that in 10 years, all of a sudden they cut off your disposal options, does the city really want to be in that position? So we took that into account as we evaluated these alternatives. It's detailed in more detail in the report, but we did recommend, and we are recommending that the current method of bile solids use is continued, and that's take this bile solids farm you have that's working so well, what can we do to fortify it, expand it, make it more functional and productive? And so we would recommend the continued use of the land application of the bile solids. But to keep up with growth and maybe some land we haven't acquired yet or need to purchase is, requires more land. So as growth happens and we produce more bile solids, it's really a function of how much bile solids can we put on the land. There's a certain, and Dr. Dorr I'm sure could talk for probably two or three hours on the agronomics of what we can apply to the land, phosphorus uptake, metals uptake, you know, the complete fate of all those things. But when we worked with staff on this, we identified how much land we'd need in multiple phases over the course of the planning period to really secure the city's ability to have a, I guess, a consistent place for you to remove those bile solids. So we looked at multiple ways to do that based on different application rates. But in the end, when the detail's in there, more land is required. So we can make additional improvements, or we can recommend additional improvements to provide that liability, reliability. We already own some of the land, but purchasing that leased land would give you more control over it. Right now, you do lease, the leases are running up in, how soon?
2020.
2020. So the decision needs to be made pretty soon, do you extend the leases or do we purchase that land? Because it's nice to have the control over the land you want to use. There are improvements at the facility we can use. We can construct a new storage lagoon. That would offer some benefit. Some of the mixing equipment is sort of antiquated. There are improvements in technology we can use to improve mixing. That will improve the land application process, improve what we can use the land for. We can actually install some pivot irrigation systems at times when it's dry. If you can apply some more water to the land, it improves the uptake of what we're applying to the land, so making that, all the crops are growing on that land more effective at what they're doing. And one of the last pieces is underneath the Kansas River, there's two parallel forest mains that were constructed back in 2001. We know one is working right now. The other one, we don't know the condition of it. It's available as a redundant line. So part of our recommendation is to investigate the condition of that line to make sure it's still functional as a redundant backup to the one that's currently being used. Like I said, we started at the end of the process. Where we use bile solids is important. Do we need to water it before we go there? It really doesn't require de-watering because we can send it over to your lagoons, apply it as a liquid as we do now. De-watering adds an additional step that really adds money without adding value. You're limited by how much bile solids you can apply to an acre of land, so de-watering it, if you weren't pumping it across the river, it might make sense. But in this case, since we already have that system in place to pump the liquid bile solids to the lagoons and then apply it, de-watering just didn't make much sense. We did look at stabilization process. As you go upstream of that, federal regulations require the solids that come out to be digested for a certain amount of time under certain conditions. So were we stabilizing this the correct way before we kept going downstream to the bile solids use? We used that same sort of analysis approach that we did in other alternatives, performance, acceptance, cost, risk, reliability, resiliency, to look at these processes. What have you already invested in? You know, is it a conventional aerobic digestion process, a two-stage process? One of the more advanced processes that can provide a higher quality. But since you've already made such a big investment in the facility, we already have digestion facilities there, to try to modify them at a lot of additional cost, just doesn't seem to make sense since what you have is working pretty well. So let's build on the investment you've made, expand it, fortify it. And I think you'll see that same message that Steve's going to carry in the water treatment plan as well, is take that same approach and build on it. Expansion is required to handle future growth. As I said, in the 2013 project, we didn't do a lot to handle growth in the bile solids system because it was handling at the time. But this is a 20-year plan. We want to give staff recommendations for short, intermediate, and long-term improvements that get you through that 20-year period because you haven't had that planned until that's time. So we would recommend keeping the existing stage-two digester, keeping basically the ones in yellow, your existing digester, construct a new digester, tank, to give you more solids holding capacity that gives staff more flexibility in holding that solids, treating that solids, making sure you meet the permit requirements. Keep working upstream. A stabilization process works better when you can thicken the solids before it goes to it. We did look, they say matrix analysis, to say, would a second DAFT make sense? Because right now you use a certain technology, but there's no redundancy to that technology. We did discover shortly after we started up the plant, 2013, when this was down, it had a negative impact with it being down on treatment performance. Having this redundancy helps you meet permit. The plant staff does a great job right now. I remember seeing a letter to the mayor on KDHE saying how well the plant was performing, you know, really meeting your permit limits. Thank you for doing that good job and continue the, continue the good work. And that came as a result of a recent inspection.
What is a DAFT?
DAFT is a dissolved air flotation. What you do is you-
No, slow down and say it slower.
Sure. I'm excited about it. Dissolved air flotation.
Dissolved air flotation.
What you do is you take a big tank, you put some bubbles in it, the solids float to the top, you skim them off, and then you send them to the digester. So you thicken them, so you thicken it by floating them, send them to these big tanks where you put more air into it, and the bugs sort of, bacteria, eat it and stabilize it. And it stays in those tanks for a long enough time. That's why we're asking for more tanks, we're recommending more tanks. And then we send it to the bile solids farm where the plants and the crops can-
Thank you. I just didn't connect with-
Sorry. I see the term every day and sometimes I-
That's okay.
Just assume. So dissolved air flotation.
Why are we thickening it? Under the process?
We thicken it before the digestion process, and you can see in the bottom left here. The stabilization process, the thicker we get it, the smaller volume we need. If we don't thicken it, we want to minimize the amount of tanks that you need to do this process. If we can effectively thicken it before digesting it, we maximize or optimize the amount of tankage you need. If we didn't thicken it, it'd be a tank farm. And I don't think we need a tank farm out there. It's a pretty place as it is, and tank farm is not what we need. But it's a necessary component of the process if we want to keep the cost down for the rest of the downstream processes. But we did look at some other options besides continuing what you have now, membrane thickener, more compact unit, more technologically intense, spin the solids, a gravity belt thickener where you take the solids and let the water kind of ooze through a moving belt, centrifuge, you spin it really fast, or you take those, these tanks that they're stabilized in and try to decant from them. The reality is you've already made a significant investment in a DAFT. You already have all the facilities there to support a second one. The second one wasn't built in the 2003 expansion. Being able to add a second tank next to the first tank, take advantage of all the support facilities that already exist, the pumps, the air compressors, the recycle pumps, all those facilities, just makes a lot of sense. We could move to a new technology. Maybe it offers a slightly bit more efficient process, but again, if you have something that's working, let's try to build on that. So that went into the whole performance, acceptance, and cost. And plant staff is familiar with the process. You know, to train them in something new and to bring in something new, I think they were, they were comfortable with what they had. This is a slide we didn't have last time, and it was a question from all the commissioners, how much is it going to cost? We kind of punted that question because we wanted your direction about where we want to go. Let's not examine something that doesn't make sense. You'll see the 16.8 million over the next 20 years. That doesn't add up to 16.8 because there's a number of other minor improvements in that cost that we didn't list up there. But first and foremost is expand your bile solids farm and acquire the leased land. Right now, again, you're leasing it. Owning it gives you the most control you can over that land, you know, so you can go, you don't have to keep negotiating lease terms that right now are favorable to the city perhaps, but in the future, as people see their land as more valuable for one reason or another, may say, I want a little bit more. So buying that land gives you that flexibility. I see a question just oozing here.
Yeah, the, so the 500 acres or so, is what we currently lease, or does it add a little bit more?
Go back to this slide. The 500, you own and lease, and you utilize all of it now.
So we're just going to buy what we currently lease?
That would be our recommended option, yes.
And do we have some reason to know with some certainty that it's going to be $6,000 an acre?
The JAS information on recent transactions in the area showed around 5,500 to 6,000 per acre. Past performance is no indication of future results. We don't know what the landowners are going to be looking for for that land. It isn't a floodplain. It does have decreased value by being in a 100-year floodplain. But real estate is a finicky thing.
Because some of the, I mean, on the agricultural side, some of the non-irrigated land is 4,200, 4,300 an acre. But this, if we want it and somebody else has it, we usually have to pay for it.
That's a trade-off, and I think, you know, talking with staff, it's discussions about, you know, land acquisition, discussion with those landowners, adjacent landowners. It's, I wouldn't say it's a monumental effort, but it's, it's an effort to see what makes the most sense, you know?
I probably should have asked this other one at the beginning, but when, when you came up last time, we had those charts, you know, that showed how much we wanted in reserve above what we were getting, getting in revenue. Does this, was this whatever that was, 16 million or whatever, does that fit? Was that part of that calculation?
I think I can probably best answer that one. Because it's, you know, we didn't-
We had one for water, one chart for water, and one for wastewater.
Yes, yes. And we included those in the, in the executive summary, in the first 30 pages of the report. What that cost was indicating was replacement of existing equipment. So at each the water, at the water treatment plant as well as the wastewater treatment plant, you have existing pumps and motors and other equipment, electrical gear. We looked at the lifecycle of all that equipment and kind of plotted it on a graph. You know, you would need to replace, you know, these pumps in five years, and this set of pumps in the following five years. And that's, that's the graph that you're remembering, Commissioner, is we, we kind of plotted an average over the, over time.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that when I was trying to remember those graphs, and the graph kind of indicated to all of us that the rate structure that we had plotted out into the future was sufficient to, to do all these kinds of things, so.
I assume you're probably referring to the fund balance charts that I show routinely. A lot of the costs associated with these projects, I think they haven't been programmed into the CIP yet. We think there's enough flexibility with, with what we've shown with these recent rate structure changes and the cost of service study that we'll be able to absorb costs. Those, those charts typically go out, go out to 2025. We don't, haven't looked much past 2025 at this point, but that's going to be a part of the next process is, is plugging these in, these costs in. And then we'll make the determination of, are we going to have to look at bringing in a consultant to do another cost of service study? That's still to be determined primarily, but I, we're pretty confident that, particularly on the wastewater side, we've got, we've got debt retiring with previous bile solids projects. So it's, it's still be, to be analyzed in detail.
One of the ideas we had is want to make sure we can make a margin to what it's going to cost, and what we were taking in revenue from weight. So this one is somewhat 16, I require 16, so it's, we each got our own charge.
Yeah, and, and, you know, the water fund has traditionally been in much better shape, but that's why we, we plugged in some cost assumptions in our expenses with that cost of service study that gave us a little bit of cushion in the, in the back half of that study. We talked about, we've got upwards of $1 million in, in funds that are set aside for other projects or debt retirement, whatever we choose to, choose to use that for. So that's going to be another, another component of this analysis.
Well, I like the, the technique of putting a date on this, because my assumption was that the date meant that if you didn't do this one in 2009, or in 2019, you couldn't do that one. It wouldn't make any sense to do it in 2021. So there's a, there's a flow to the installation of these different facilities.
And in reality, a lot of these individual projects are like projects that would be combined and, and put into some sort of 20-year funding through, low-interest loan through KDHE.
I know there's a longer presentation for the next part, but I just want to know, you mentioned Westar, so that's one, one player that we have to consider. The other one is Blue Township. So where does that fall into this, just as we're talking about financing and all of this?
Oh, as far as financing and Blue Township?
Financing or capacity, Commissioner?
Capacity.
As far as-
Financing eventually.
Okay. I think Rob could see better to the financing portion. As far as their impact, we recently did a study as part of a headwork loading analysis of what Blue Township was doing, their sewer contribution to the wastewater plant. It wasn't shown to be a significant contributor, you know, and making, before and after they were connected, really didn't see them much more than a blip at the moment on their impact at the plant. And I think we saw this, I think we're thinking the same thing on the water side as well.
On the wastewater side, the last numbers I ran was 3.25%. So the total flow into the wastewater treatment plant, Blue Township's lift station, they're, they're less than 4%. The water, I don't have memorized. I can look up some charts if you like, but obviously if that's their flow in, they're-
Since that's where it's growing and they're expecting a school and all of these other things, I wasn't sure if any of that would have an impact on it.
I like Garrett, correct me if I misstate this, but the improvements that we're talking about are not influenced by Blue Township. They're influenced by the 60,000 that are inside the city limits of Manhattan and, and the growth that we continue to see and have.
That's correct. Right now, we're probably, the plant's designed for 11 million gallons a day. Right now, we're running average of 5.5 to 6 million gallons a day. So as a liquid treatment capacity, we do have that. That's why this focused on the solid side of things. That's where we didn't have that reliability, that capacity, that redundancy. And that's why you see more of these capital upgrade projects being on the solid side. And as far as Commissioner Dodson, the flow of things, I may have caught the flow here. We start from the end, expanding bile solids. We're working way upstream to the stabilization, the digester improvements, working way upstream to the thickening, and then going back to the bile solids farm and then going back to the treatment process. There was a lot of money spent in 2000, between 2010 and 2013 on the liquid treatment process, which is why you see the aeration basins and final basins program 10 years from now. If you have a lot of capacity there, to rush to make changes there, we didn't see it as a priority. So that's the natural flow of things. Let's fortify your bile solids process, go back, look at the need for land, go back to the treatment process, and then emergency backup power, and it's, you know, where do you put that money? And then go back to the bile solids again. So that's how we laid it out. That's what we saw as the priorities. We're working with staff on prioritizing, and we saw that, saw that in the report as far as short-term, intermediate, long-term, based on all those criteria we had to make the right choice about where to spend that money.
Commissioner Reddy, I would just comment on the financial side of things with Blue Township. It's set up for, as their customer growth increases, they have, they're, they're set on a user amount, and so they'll buy more capacity and contribute more based on different growth targets that have been established in that agreement. The one thing that, that would enhance that or would change that role would be if there were, you know, more industrial-type users that had high-strength capacity that would use up some of that space quicker. You know, that's one of the reasons we were aggressive in making sure our pre-treatment ordinances were adopted in that area.
So is food, is that a factor?
Not really. I mean, it's just, I mean, you've got more users, but it's, it's common use.
It's, it's the strength of the waste, you know? I mean, you hear Garrett talking about hydraulic capacity, there's also a biological capacity too. And I think in the Blue Township analysis and working with ABDU, I think I briefed you all, we're sitting right around about 56% of the biological capacity is used up right now. We have lots of room for growth, so. And, and Ron's right. If an industrial user comes in, our industrial pre-treatment program is via ordinance, or I believe it's resolution actually, has been adopted by Potawatomi County Township. There's also additional rates. If you exceed a certain strength of waste, there's an additional formula and cost that, that gets calculated for that strength. So not to pick on the brewing company out in the tech park, but they have an additional cost they have to pay because their strength of waste is stronger.
I'm moving on to water next, or Steve's going to talk about water. Other wastewater questions? I know apparently I went through it way too quick because I was talking too fast and didn't explain some things for you.
No, it was just a term I didn't-
Okay.
I had, couldn't catch. I wanted to just say that I was initially concerned about the recommendation about the, the emergency backup power.
Okay.
But then on this chart, while it, it is 2.3 million, it doesn't occur until 2031, so we don't have to be concerned. I mean, I was thrilled that Westar located a substation there. I thought that was the end of all of our problems. We wouldn't have to worry about it. But we do have to worry, I suppose, with the, if there's an outage. But does, do other communities have that strong an emergency power backup? Would we be on the high end of this by having something like that?
On the high end of-
Of?
Backup power, require EPA requirements-
Yeah.
Require you to have two sources.
Okay.
Whether that's two separate sources from two different substations.
Sure.
The way that Westar has fortified this particular substation is upstream. They've recently done some improvements to make it even more reliable. It's a key part of the network, we thought, and we know it will be, receive first attention in any sort of incident.
Okay.
Short of that. Is having generators excess? It depends on the plant you want to go to and how much they don't want to rely on utility and the reliability of that utility. I think lots of staff would love to have a generator so when that outage, they're not missing anything.
Completely, yeah. The generator we bought recently for the water treatment, for the wastewater treatment plant was for the administration building? We just bought one, right?
No, you're mixing things up.
Water treatment plant?
So, so the water, the clean water side, water treatment plant, that's the one that has been authorized by you all and is under construction right now.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that's scheduled for installation April, just in time for summer to make sure you have that, that reliability. That's, that's a different part of the distribution system.
I was confusing the two. Okay.
But there are, as recently as Mr. Dewitt presented, improvements in the generation capacity at the treatment plant for the raw wastewater pump station in the administration building. So that drove some of this decision to set the timeframe at 2031, since you were adding generation capacity for key parts of the process.
Quite a ways out, so we're, I mean, a lot, lot can change between now and 2031.
But luckily, Westar's been making some solid improvements across their system, so that, again, figured into this.
Okay. Randy, about the purchasing of the land? I, I think I understood from a couple of years ago that the, the owner was perfectly happy farming it and really wasn't interested in selling it. Does this mean that the owner might be interested in selling now?
Well, we'll have a conversation about this when we start talking about water as well.
Yeah, okay.
The, the land that we don't own, part of it is owned by, or farmed by Starry or CK Processing.
Uh huh, right.
And the other is a, is a family farm that's been in, been there for a significant amount of time, so.
But that's the current use. We use it now. We just lease it.
Yes.
And so the switch would be to, to purchase.
So we, we do, we have, you know, again, there's good farmers and there's bad farmers. Having ownership of that land would help us prevent from, or have more control over substandard farming practices, all with the, all with the goal of maximizing yields, which of course maximizes our ability to put bile solids on the ground. We've got early indications that those owners are willing to participate with us, particularly on the water side, because the same, same entity owns a lot of the land surrounding our water well field. They know, they know that we're interested and will need to be purchasing land in the future. They also know the value of the land, so it's going to be one of those, it's a long negotiation we had.
So the, the message has changed over the years. So as time goes on, they might be more willing than they were initial, than last, three years ago when I first became a commissioner.
Okay, yeah.
My information is dated. That's what I was saying.
Well, yeah. At that time, and I remember what we were talking about, that was a different owner at that time, particularly in the, on the water side. Shortly after we took our little tour, that land changed hands, so.
Very, okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any more questions on the wastewater side before I pass it on to Mr. Rilke? Okay. Thank you.
All right. So the next thing we wanted to talk about were the analyses that we performed regarding the water side of the system. So much like at the wastewater treatment plant, just a couple of years prior, in 2010, there were several improvements that were made to the water treatment plant. And you'd see, you know, new disin, or updated disinfection building, transfer pumps, several see new disin, or updated disinfection building, transfer pumps, several improvements that were all done to increase the capacity of the water treatment plant as well as improve This is a diagram which indicates, or shows you guys where all of the water wells that are utilized by the water treatment plant are located. The wells vary in age, but generally speaking, the wells on the west side are older, which is why they're named the old well field, and get newer in age as you progress back to the east. The last four wells, 25, 6, 27, and 28, were all installed in 2010. A couple other things to note about the well field, the wells in the old well field do not produce as high a quality of water that you get in the new well field, it's a harder water. There are also some issues with the water we're pulling from well 13. KDHE, as I'm sure many of you are aware, has partnered with the city in order to improve the water quality from well 13 prior to it going to the plant. Well 18 has also proved to be a little troublesome over the years, has never really shown the capacity that it should have, and despite repeated maintenance performed by city staff, that number's never really come up, so it's currently not in use. But as I said, as you get into the new well field, you generally get a much higher quality water. The important thing to note about the quality of source water is the higher the quality you're pulling from the aquifer, the fewer chemicals and the less cost that it takes to treat that water, which is why the water quality is so important. And we touched on this a little bit earlier, this was the growth area that we used, which was from the comp plan that was completed a few years ago, that includes the area of Blue Township. And it's because of the growth throughout the entire area that we have projected the need for a new increase in supply. We projected during the 20-year period that we would need to increase treatment capacity by approximately 10 million gallons per day. So one of the big tasks on this side of the analysis, the water side, was to look at whether or not the recommendation would be for a new water treatment plant, a 10 million gallon per day facility at some other location within the city limits, or if it would be more, excuse me, cost effective or practical to just increase the size of the existing facility in order to accommodate for that growth. So these, this is a map which shows the different locations that we looked at, the two that were crossed out, the Wildcat Creek and the VMI Track, locations five and six. Location five, we kind of threw out very early in the process because there's not a good source of groundwater that would be able to meet the 10 million gallons per day at that location. Location six, the VMI Track, is in a 100-year flood plain and also slightly further away from the river, the Kansas River, which would be the source of the water in this instance, than location two, Stag Hill. So without any further justification of the cost for the distance, we set aside that option. So the other ones were, location one, which was just expanding the existing facility, location two, down by the golf course at Stag Hill, which would pull from the Kansas River. Location three would be to put the facility adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant, but still pull water from the existing well field. And location four was within the city's existing well field. So those were the four options that we took a look at, and much like with the wastewater analysis, we looked at performance, acceptance, and cost. One of the big drivers in the selection that we ended up with through the recommendation, excuse me, that we ended up with, was cost. Expanding the existing wastewater treatment plant to handle the additional 10 million gallons per day was about half the cost of building a new facility.
So when you're talking about that particular slide, are you talking about the location of a future water tower? Are you talking about building a new water treatment processing plant?
These were locations where we were looking for a new water treatment plant.
Water, okay.
Yes. To jump ahead a little bit, we did also make a recommendation over the 20-year period for installing three additional 1 million gallon elevated storage facilities. Those were all located on the west part of town. And if you read through the report, we spoke somewhat generically about their location. Part of that is because it was, it was a little beyond the scope to do the hydraulic analysis, which would be required to cite those facilities, because your proximity to demand, the existing system capacity, and any improvements that might be nade to the pipes you currently have in the ground was, was a little more focused than the 30,000-foot look that we took.
So we'd have to have another study to figure out where to put them?
And Randy can talk about this a little bit, but the city intends on, or city staff intends on looking at a water master plan, which looks very specifically at those types of issues.
Okay, that's one of the issues.
Yeah, so more focused, generally, we'll break our studies into facilities, which this is, and then for the distribution, water distribution, sanitary sewer collection system, will be more focused master plan efforts, just for those particular entities. We're also currently in the beginning process of a, of a study of our booster stations and the capacity of those stations, so another study that we're doing, I'm going through the CIP programming process now, that water and wastewater master plan effort will probably be either 2019 or 2020. So it'll be coming very soon, and that will be the opportunity to take a much closer look at citing and specific characteristics of those improvements.
And that'll build on what this report is, produces, showing us, okay, thank you.
Like you said, it was, this was more of a, if we're not gonna focus on an additional supply in the area, we're experiencing demand growth. In lieu of having that facility there, we know that we have to have an improved ability to get water from the existing facility to those demands, as well as a, not only transmission but storage. So really, it's a, if, if we weren't doing, or if we were doing another facility in the southwest part of town, you still may need transmission improvements, you still may need some storage improvements, but it probably wouldn't be to the, to the tune of 3 million gallons worth of storage, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other questions before we move on? So these are some of the improvements that will need to be made to the water treatment plant, upgrading the finished water pump station, addition of clear wells, as well as changes to the filters to expand the plant, the plant capacity, another 10 million gallons.
I have a question.
Sure.
And as I look at that map, whichever one I'm looking at, expanding and hardening the existing water treatment plant is recommended.
Yes.
I think I can see Dairy Queen there.
Yes.
And then the road, but it looks like the rest of the park is consumed by the pools, or is that right? So are we talking about expanding into that?
No, we are not.
Okay, we're not, okay.
We're outside the parks, Commissioner.
We're where?
We're out, we are not encroaching into any of the parks that are adjacent to the property.
Okay, that's what I wondered.
That was one of the major components of analyzing this, this option, was impacts to the neighboring parks, and so we looked extensively at if we had to expand from 30 to 40.
Where would you go?
Would it impact this commercial area, would it impact the park? So this is all, this is the fence line of the existing perimeter of the, of the plant. Of course, the park is right there, at least the playground equipment and then all the open space.
I noticed there is some activity there on the left, in that area, as I drive by. So you are doing, developing some additional, what, buildings or grading and...
That's primarily associated with the electrical improvements ongoing right now, so.
Electrical, okay.
The improvements are primarily gauged around bringing up some of our, our electrical gear for the low service pump station, which is here, and right now it's fed by this substation here. This is a medium voltage substation, it's kind of an antiquated source, it's also very unreliable, and the rest of the, rest of the plant equipment, or the majority of the plant equipment, is fed from low voltage substations throughout levee substations, so that project is geared towards converting whatever equipment we have that is on this unreliable electrical feed, and expanding the existing electrical building so we can house that electrical gear for all the pumps, as well as adding the generator.
Thank you, I just appreciate your answering my questions, probably.
Okay, so in addition to making improvements to the plant to increase capacity, we also made a number of recommendations for continuing to maintain and upgrade the plant to provide additional reliability. The mechanisms within the basins go through a rotation on their replacement, typically those mechanisms last about 20 years, so within the scope of this plan, you know, those will need to be replaced, as well as some other miscellaneous improvements. And I guess it's also important to note that, and it's maybe not fully captured within the report, that if we had selected a location for a new water treatment plant, many of these improvements would have to occur anyway, but some of these improvements that you see on these two slides become much more cost effective as part of a plant expansion instead of being done separately.
How big of an administration building that's on the far left there?
I believe the...
Are we talking, I mean, now, the administration is in the plant now, right?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay.
I believe, I believe I'll have to look that up or I'll give you the wrong number. Unless you have it off the top of your head.
Existing size, no.
Yeah.
I mean, primarily, we, at the existing facility, there's an office for the superintendent, there's a control room where the operators, you know, monitor this gate, and there's a very small lab, and there is a, an entryway that's been converted into office space that houses all of our maintenance staff. They all have to share the same space, so there's a small break room and there's no training facility, so there's no, there's no room to have the entire plant staff sit around and go through safety training or meeting with consultants, it's, it's very limited in that capacity.
Nor can you all leave at the same time. Somebody has to be there.
That's really a, it's not a necessity at this point, it's not, it's something that we'd like to do in the future, it's actually programmed, and we keep pushing it back in the CIP because it's really not our highest priority at this time, but eventually, one of these days, we're gonna have to expand those uses. One of the things that we did discuss with this plan in detail was what that would look like, we just identified that there is a need. Maintenance, maintenance storage is a premium, we're building a, a very economical storage building at the wastewater facility right now, just because the amount of parts and spare parts that we have to have on site in order to maintain redundancy, it's a premium, so any, any additional storage space that we can get is, is great.
It's okay just to say it's a very modest.
Sure.
Administration building.
So.
It's listed on page 34, and it's listed as Project 15, it's out in 2030, so it's a ways out.
It's a ways out.
There are going to be spaces within the existing footprint of the building, such as, there's a high service pump station here that is pumps and motors that eventually would be a part of any future facility, so, you know, there's, there's opportunities to free up existing space within the footprint that could be used for storage, potentially office space, but...
At some point, you're going to exceed the capacity you have. Thank you.
Okay.
This is my only chance to ask all the questions I've ever wondered about.
Well, that's, that's why we're here. So in addition to expanding the water treatment plant, you also need to expand the well capacity that you have, the, and the location, as, as we discussed before, you can see on this slide, the water treatment plant, which I'll point out, is over here, so here you have the old well field, the middle well field, and the, again, the new well field. One of the topics that we discussed quite a bit last time was the water assurance district, which surrounds the river here. We did a cursory analysis on the, what well capacity one could expect to receive in this area, and also the water rights, and we identified these areas based on those two analyses. So you will need to expand the well field in addition to the water treatment plant, and due to the high quality of the source water, we identified these areas. An additional recommendation was to decommission those poor performing wells. We were keeping well number 13 in operation, and the reason for that is that it is currently, the poor water quality is due to a plume of, or I'm just gonna call it poor quality water.
Hydrocarbons.
Hydrocarbons, yeah, yeah, that exist in the groundwater. If we were to take well number 13 out of service, that plume would eventually migrate into the middle well field, so it's important to keep pumping it to keep the plume from moving. So well number 13 would stay in operation, but we would decommission the remaining wells in the old well field, and we'd also recommend taking well number 18, which currently isn't in use, out of service entirely.
Quick question about water quality.
Yeah.
You kind of already, in a way, brought it up, I was just thinking about it. Obviously, there's a higher focus because of what's happened nationally on water quality, right? And I was reading a report the other day, that a lot of cities that even have good reports on their water, water quality are investing money into older infrastructure to make sure that they never have an issue, essentially, making sure their pipes are all good. So in the older well field, do we have any infrastructure issues that we would just maybe need to invest the money in to assure that we never had a problem? Or is all of that good, we're producing solid water quality?
The, the quality of water that the water treatment plant produces is a high quality water. The issues that you see other parts in the United States are due to lead and copper, and that is due to the specific chemistry of the water. And that's, that's one of the advantages to keeping the single water treatment plant, is that if you have two water treatment plants producing water for a municipality, the chemistry of the water is slightly different, which can cause interactions within the distribution system.
It is also due to lead piping though, right?
Yeah, oh yes, well, yes, that's the...
So is that pipe, what is that piping?
Oh, no, that would, that's cast iron, I assume, in that area.
Yeah, really, really the focus on retiring these wells is the formation, the quantity of water it produces, the quality of water, and we say quality, we're talking about iron and manganese, which we have to, we have to remove in order to make the water soft. So this, this infrastructure, while it may be aged, there's really no concerns with, with the material. You may, you may come across some older fittings that, you know, nowadays they're bolted together. In the old days, they may have been soldered together with lead or something like that. You know, those, those still exist today, but the quality of the water is sufficient to where that, that, that material is only, only really comes an issue is if the quality of water allows those materials to degrade into the water. So we take steps to prevent that as well by addition of polyphosphates, or we tend to. There are, there are other chemicals that can be added specifically for the purpose of inhibiting that, that process of, you know, the lead in the lead pipes to being leached into the water.
Thank you for clarifying that. Obviously, it's a sensitive subject, and as we talk about quality, no matter what direction we want to go, I just wanted to make sure it was completely clear that no matter what direction we went, we were producing quality water that was safe to drink.
Oh, yes, definitely.
So the other thing we're doing is, that isn't required, and we've done over, over a decade now, is we're sampling our source water on a regular basis, not required at all, but we want to know what's going into the plant. And so by monitoring those levels, we can be more efficient at the plant as well.
Sure. Since we're on that topic, just briefly, as a footnote, when I was reading the earlier parts of this in the documents, and you may have mentioned it last time, NBAH will have its own facility, right, for water or capacity, whatever it is, there, it'll be a separate entity.
Based on, and you're speaking to the wastewater side, am I correct? Yes. Based on discussions that the officials at NBAH have had with city staff... Yes. Based on discussions that the officials at NBAH have had with city staff, they plan on installing a pre-treatment facility, which will treat their wastewater to a level which will be similar in concentration to household waste.
But I will, will note, because, because of the characteristic, before they pretreat, they will still be permitted by the city under our industrial wastewater permitting system. So in the event that there is an issue with their pre-treatment system, we still have regulatory authority over that waste stream. So.
But otherwise, on the water side, they're, they're just a, they're not a regular user. They'll be a high-volume user. But they don't have any special water holding facilities.
Mainly because that a, the facility is there for a certain purpose. That was one of the concerns that came up consistently when we were talking about NBAH being in Manhattan. So I just wanted to make clear that these are two different.
Mm-hmm.
Facilities.
Yes. Yeah, they're, they're a very unique customer. Definitely. Okay. So here is the summary of capital upgrade projects on the water side. And Commissioner Dotson, as you noted previously, the, the dollar amount over the next 20 years is significantly higher on the water side than it is on the wastewater side. And that is due mainly to the investment of the 41.1 million to expand the water treatment plant and well field capacity. But we also include, as you can see, at approximately every 10 years, the installation of a 1 million gallon elevated storage tank that we touched on briefly earlier, as well as decommissioning and replacing the poor performing wells and other improvements at the water treatment plant. And as in the, as in the chart that Garrett went through as well, there are, there are other miscellaneous costs that we include in the report. So the, the total here doesn't add up to 60.8 million, if you were doing that in your head.
What does it cost to actually decommission one well? I mean, we're talking 10, maybe, something like that.
Let's see.
For three, what, 3 million?
We were one, two, three.
So if you just, I mean, like, well number 18 isn't in use and we're going to decommission it.
Well, and the, the three point.
What do you have to do to decommission?
You go through a process that is highly detailed by KDHE.
All right.
And, and an important point to note that Ben reminded me of is this is also the installation of the new wells. Cause there.
I see.
When you decommission the wells, you need to replace that capacity.
Yeah.
And we have captured that capacity in this 3.1 million.
With the replacement.
For replacement.
Yeah.
There are additional wells that you need to install when you do the water treatment plant upgrade.
No, I was just curious about, so you, what you're basically saying is there is a KDHE process to decommission a well. Okay. That's what I need, that's all I need. Okay.
Primarily, the, the cost of decommission a well is, is minimal compared to the cost of a new well.
Compared. Right.
Specific processes would be plugging and capping that well.
Right.
Obviously, you have a potential source of groundwater contamination if, if you don't cap it properly. So, yeah, there's costs, but they're, they're minuscule compared to the cost of actually drilling a new well and all the infrastructure.
That's fine. I just wasn't thought about capping a well in a long time. Also, I think you have to raise the cost of the million gallon water tower every 10 years. So it can't hold at 3.57.
What we did is all of the capital improvement costs, we did it present value. So we used 2017 cost.
Okay. Present value. All right. Thank you.
You are correct. It, a capital project is never cheaper to do in the future than it is today.
Yeah.
Due to inflation.
Absolutely.
You see, I'm sure you see that across the board.
Thank you.
So with that, I think we, if there are any additional questions that you have regarding either the water or the wastewater side. And once again, these aerial photos were, were taken by a city staff member on his free time, has a drone and, and actually took these photos. So I don't want to take credit for their great work.
Are there questions from the, this is the formality. There are no, there's no public here. But are there questions from the public? Seeing no public. I will close the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that reminder. Yeah. And appreciate your presentation and your receptivity to answering our questions.
Sorry.
And I think we have a good system here. And I, we have a lot of confidence and abdue. And so we're, and Randy, and all of the, but can we cut the cost of the administration building?
Well, the report, the report's still in draft.
I just thought it's 2.3 million.
And it's the intended that obviously.
In 2030, but.
There's a difference between building a building that is like what we're doing at the wastewater plant and building something that is architecturally matches what's there now. So there's obviously a lot of things we can do to.
I understand. I just probably just should, shouldn't have. Okay. Thank you very much.
I didn't want to say, I, you know, I think oftentimes, we're very fortunate to live in a city where we don't have much public comment on water and wastewater systems. I think that speaks well to what our staff does and how well is taken care of. Cause there are many areas, not only in the nation, but in Kansas itself, where water is a big issue right now. And they're having a difficult time. And that constantly comes up, be, any legislators that's talking about, I mean, that seems to be one of the big things they're talking about is water these days. The timeline is vast. So even though it says $60 million and it says 2040, it's hard to visualize just how all of that falls into place. I think it's necessary we do all of these upgrades and keep up with the population growth. And we don't know what else is going to happen in 20 years. We certainly will not be here. But there, the population's going to increase. We may have more annexation going on. I don't know what all of that's going to look like. I don't know what the university is going to look like. But I'm hoping we have a good funding source ultimately. I mean, when we talk about the North Campus Corridor, which is $42 million, South Child Corridor, which is in the millions, there's nothing in the hundreds of thousands anymore. It's just double-digit millions, everything. And, and our taxpayers are going to pick up the tab. And with rates or taxes or whatever it is. So I just want us to be cautious as we move forward. But not having anybody speak up for public, public comment for water is a wonderful thing.
And I think it's important to note that we do not have the heavy processing of our water like those cities on down the Kansas River, Topeka, Lawrence, Kansas City, that use the Kansas River as their water source. We're so fortunate to have clean water here to begin with. And so, other comments? With that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all. Appreciate it.